We'll start as soon as TC Media comes online. Welcome everyone to the Monday, November 6, 2023 Tom Water City Council meeting. Just as a reminder, we're meeting on Monday because tomorrow Tuesday, the 7th of November is Election Day. And we usually change our elections, our meetings to not conflict with the election day. So with that, we will go to roll call.
Councilmember Lea Adalha.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
I, she, I'll let her, you know, when she arrives, so.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Charlie Schneider.
Present.
And Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
And I am present, so join me in our flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and awesome power.
All right, we have a couple of special items. And the first one is proclamation for natural veterans and military family month. And I have actually taken the liberty to read this this evening since my, my family is, has been in service to this country and I want to honor them. So proclamation, whereas Tom Water honors the strengths and sacrifice of our veterans and active military members whose service is essential to our national security and freedom, and the family caregivers and the survivors of the veterans during the month of November. And whereas November is a time to acknowledge the tremendous sacrifices our veterans and military families make, Washington is home to more, more than 539,000 veterans, 62,000 active duty military, 18,000 National Guard and reserves and their supportive families. And whereas our veterans and service members are brave and selfless individuals who respond when called to duty. Their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals of which the United States was founded are both necessary and inspiring. To be a service member and a veteran is to have an enduring and survive, to endured and survived challenges most Americans will never know. Whereas to be a military family and sacrifices more for our country than most Americans will ever give, military families endure separation from their loved ones and then, and adjust to the living situations with short-term notice and frequency of every two to three years. Whereas there are currently 1.2 million military children of active duty members worldwide, and nearly 80% of the military children attend public schools throughout the United States. Washington State educates currently, currently work, currently work with 136,000 military families to have, to, and have to help kids rope with stress deployments and their parent, of their parents and impacts of grief and loss, discussing violence, terrorism, war, and the anticipation of loved ones returning home. Whereas for supportive families sustains the fighting force and the strengths of health and security of our, safety of our country. We, I now for Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of City of Tom Water, do by proclaim November 2023 National Veterans and Military Family Month, and encourage people to join me in recognizing and supporting our veterans and military families who embody strength, resilience, courage, whose experience enrich our community. And I also want to recognize that Councilmember Jefferson is a military veteran and I want to thank you for your service also. So in attendance, I have Shane Sullivan from the Lacey Veterans Hub. And I wanted to present this proclamation to him. Yes, you can come to this podium and you can maybe mention a little bit about the Veterans Hub because it is really a vital service to this community.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really appreciate your words and receiving of the proclamation. The, on behalf of veterans locally and, and just the numbers that you had gone over, they sometimes are staggering on, on the dedication that it does take to be able to defend a country. And so with that one being said, we have, as you had aforementioned, the Lacey Veteran Service Hub that I also represent. At the hub, we do take care of veterans, veteran dependents and their families. We have, we just recently had re-counted our partnerships and we're at a total of 144 different partnerships. So when I can go through a number of different things and the highlights of housing and education and jobs and finances, and be able to process the claims for the veterans that have earned those, those benefits. There's so much more than that. Would encourage anybody and everybody to swing by the hub. Come see me at the hub and be able to see what it is that we can do and what it is that we can do to, and to pay back the, the efforts that the veterans and the veterans families have, have given forth to our wonderful country.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And here's the proclamation and also a pencil.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you for your service.
Absolutely.
Also, I would be remiss to not recognize Councilmember Swarthout, whose husband served in the military also. So next item is proclamation for GIS Day and Councilmember Adalha will read that.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the City of Tom Water recognizes that an understanding, use and application of geospatial, say that five times fast, technology is crucial to operating our infrastructure, sustaining our natural resources and stimulating economic growth, thus benefiting the welfare of the general public throughout the South Puget Sound region. And whereas geographic information systems, GIS, you learned a new acronym, technology allows us to see and model complex relationships and patterns to more intelligently respond. And whereas there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education and technical training to use this rapidly developing technology to its full potential. And whereas the City of Tom Water acknowledges those that have chosen GIS as their profession or as part of their discipline to improve the lives of our residents. And whereas to recognize and support the efforts of partners who work on activities to improve environmental sustainability, human services and various humanitarian efforts to better our world. And whereas having a day of GIS training activities open to staff and government leaders will help promote spatial thinking and a better understanding of the use of these decision-making tools. And whereas the City of Tom Water is committed to utilizing GIS to inform decision-making and better serve its residents and make useful geographic information open and easily available to the community as a platform for innovation. Now therefore Debbie Sullivan, the mayor of the City of Tom Water, does hereby proclaim November 15, 2023 GIS Day. And she calls upon the people of the City of Tom Water to learn about the GIS applications and data available on our website and encourage geospatial education in our community.
Great. And I believe we have, go ahead and I will bring the proclamation down.
Thank you, Councilmember Adalha. And I just want to say on behalf of my staff, thank you very much for recognizing GIS Day. I do have a few pictures I would like to share. So the first picture, so just a little bit about what we do. We do map assets and data for the city. So we have our intern here with our GPS unit out mapping some data and our survey van, we are waiting for our nice new electric vehicle, but you know, those have been on backwater for a while. So we have to have data in order to do anything else. So we do collect some of our data, but we work with people all throughout the city. And what we really do is help them see patterns and visualize their data and make better decisions. So if you'll go to the next. So one of the things that we've done recently is we've worked with our stormwater crew. And they, so we've gone out GPS and mapped where all of our storm drains are. And the crew by permit is required to go out and inspect each one of those every two years. So before it had really taken them like the two full years to out inspect all of them. We've worked with them to create a field application where they, they have the tablet in the field, they go inspect, they enter their inspection information and they mark it on the map. But if it's done, it falls off the map. If it needs to be cleaned, the, the symbol changes and if it needs to be maintained, the symbol changes. And then we have this dashboard that's available to staff and management to be able to kind of see the progress. And we launched this, they started using it at the end of December and it actually only took them four months to actually do the whole city and inspect all of the catch basins. So, so we try to help people with their data, you know, better see what's happening and make better decisions. So the next little picture, we also, none of this is our data. We worked with Alyssa, our sustainability coordinator and our community development department to pull permit data and develop this dashboard so you can see where in the city solar permits have been requested and where solar panels have been installed and whether it's, you know, commercial or residential and, you know, as the information is updated behind the scenes, this dashboard updates automatically. So we just help people visualize their data. And then, you know, as we said, we are going to be holding a training for city staff and you know, it's really geared towards city staff, but anyone who's interested can come. But we encourage everyone else, anyone, you know, watching remotely or whatever, to go to our website and explore what we have to offer there. So our GIS, we do have a GIS website and it basically has two links on it. And if you'll scroll down, the first link goes to our open data site. So here you can go and you can actually download some of our data to use in your own maps. And some consultants use this, but a lot of students find this very valuable to, and they can, you know, learn how to do GIS and how to do their own analysis. And they have a data available to them to do that. And a lot of times it's hard for them to get that data to do a project. So we have this data available for them. And then the second link on the main city's website is, goes to our featured content page. So these are all of the maps on the city's website, but pulled together in one place. So you can just go here and see what kind of things we have to offer. And things like the snow and ice response, which is the fall of the snow plow, that's a really popular one. And the street sweepers and there's all sorts of other maps on there, but that's all I wanted to share, just a few, a little bit about what we do. And thank you so much for celebrating GIS Day with us.
Is there any questions? I believe Councilmember Adalha has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. The one in the proclamation that talked about using it for like human services. And I'm wondering, Lacey Olympia, Tom Water, Thurston County, the lot Clean Water Alliance is doing some epidemiology studies with Department of Health of trends in the water and sampling. Could that be something Tom Water could do to like gauge public health of our community?
I know GIS is used in a lot of different public health applications. I'm not familiar with what, I mean, I've heard what lots doing, but I don't, haven't heard about any GIS data or anything available. But that's, that's a perfect use for GIS.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So here's the proclamation and a pencil. Thank you so much for attending this evening.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next item on our agenda is the Thurston EDC and the Lacey Spacemaker update for Tom Water Small Business Support Services. So we have Michael Cade, Executive Director, Sean Moore, and I think our own Economic Development manager will be helping out. So welcome, Austin.
Thank you. And I just wanted to introduce them again before I pass it off. We've got Michael Cade and Sean Moore. You're going to hear about their impact in Tom Water tonight. How folks are benefiting from the regional ecosystem that they're building. And then I don't want to steal the spotlight, but you'll get to hear some testimonials from Tom Water businesses on how they've taken advantage of the resources the EDC provides, which is largely due to the continued investment we've made in their services and Thurston Strong. And that's the most rewarding part of economic development work. We'll hear more about what's coming up ahead at GGC this week, General Government Committee. So more to come after tonight's presentation.
Thank you, Austin. Do you mind if I hand these cards out right now while I do my introduction?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your time. Again, Michael Cade, Executive Director of the Thurston Economic Development Council. And we, normally when I come here, I kind of ramble for about five minutes of thank you for your resources and time. I'm not going to do that this time. Because I think it's important that you hear a thank you from the folks that we serve through your resources. And know that we appreciate your resources and we put them to good work. But I think it's most important that, and I do want to read these out loud. I've handed these out to you, but I do think it's important we read those for the record because this is really where we're making some serious impacts on our local economy. We've done quite a bit of data research and we've talked about, a little bit about kind of the nature and the DNA that Thurston County is. This is small businesses that we have. We have some mighty large businesses. But a lot of the work that we do is small business and we recruit them. But we also provide an ecosystem for them to grow and launch. And really that's what we want to talk about tonight is the Makerspace and the work there and the work that Sean does with the Center for Business Innovation. So if you just give me a moment of, of, of time, I'd like to read these out from Beth Johnson, Chapters of Living. I would like to thank the City of Tom Water for supporting the small business community, which includes my business. Launching a new business is always exciting and daunting. So having the support of the city that I support is especially appreciated. From Michelle Martinez, Media Room LLC. Thank you for being a strong supporter of programs that elevate small businesses that makes a massive difference for entrepreneurs. From Rebecca Weber, Sapient Living. I would like to thank the Tom Water City Council for their support of small businesses like mine through the excellent teachings and access to very useful, very useful resources. Your clear commitment to business development makes me very excited to live here and I hope to contribute back to my community through my work. And then from Bob Carr, AIC Associates LLC, I was very impressed and grateful for the information that was presented by the Thurston EDC, CBNI and WCWB team. There was so much I almost was overwhelmed and I have had to go back through it all slowly to try and digest it. Appreciative, but the city council opted to make this available to prospective small business owners. It is an enormous help to navigating the sometimes confusing maze of regulations. I hope that programs like this can be made available again to others who are thinking of starting a relocated business. And this is not Cade speaking. This is, I'm honored to be able to speak these words on their behalf and extend those to you. That's the resources you provide us. I'm very grateful for it and I'm very, want to make sure we're using those dollars very, very judiciously and correctly, but this is the impact that you're having. If you want to go to, I don't know who's working slides here, or is that me or, oh, excuse me. So if you want to go to the first slide, and thanks, thankfully you stopped in on the GIS program as a former geography major. Go ahead and to the next slide. That's a lot of stuff on the, on the wall there and I'm not going to go through that. What we demonstrate to our entrepreneurs and our business reps, they don't really have to know what all those logos mean and what they do. We do the triage, we do that triage through the resource you provide us. We make sure that they get absolute every resource and piece of data that they have to be successful and to make the decisions they need to make to be successful in their endeavors. Go to the next slide. And so what we want to talk about a little bit is about, the rest, I'm going to step back and I'll let Sean Moore talk. But again, that's the ecosystem that we've developed through your help. Makerspace is, we're going to be end up speaking about the Makerspace. You'll hear some stories about some Tom Water businesses. But keep in mind that when you, if you were an entrepreneur, you could just drop yourself into that system. We would find the entry point for you and we'd also find the exit point for you. But not only that, we would find the network that you need to have to survive either here in Tom Water or virtually somewhere else. But again, this is a really cool thing that we're doing and I'm so proud to be a part of it and I'm proud to read these letters of thanks to you. Thank you very much. Sean?
Good evening. Hopefully my voice holds up. I've been talking already. So what I want to do is just talk a little bit about some of the resources that we're providing you and you're paying for and how they're being used by the entrepreneurs in Tom Water. And then we'll talk a little bit about the Makerspace. And so one of the programs that you're funding is the Business Enterprise Startup Training Program here. And this is one of our, one of our most popular problems, programs. It's an online program. And it has four online courses that include business plan writing for startups and marketing for, and branding for startups and structuring and licensing for startups. And then also structuring and, sorry, and accounting for startups. That does come with a six-month access to a live plan software that helps folks write their business plan. And this is one of the most valuable pieces of this program is it really does help people go through the business plan writing process and get them to that next step. We find that people that can commit to writing their business plans end up actually starting their businesses. And so this is one of the programs you're supporting and something that is available on demand. So if someone comes into our ecosystem, they can get a scholarship for that right away and start learning immediately. Next slide, please. The other program you're supporting, you're supporting is the Quick Startup Program. And this is a program of the Washington Center for Women in Business. The Washington Center for Women in Business is an SBA Women's Business Center, one of about 130-ish in the country. And so the Quick Startup Program is an online incubator. And essentially what it does is it helps folks that have a product get it to market quickly to sell. And one of the things that we try to sort of preach around the Center for Business and Innovation is that we don't want people to jump into a 10,000 square foot space and buy all this stuff. We want people to sort of work their way and do a lean startup and, and start selling as soon as they can and make some profit. And then eventually get into the bigger space and really minimize that risk. And so that's what this Quick Startup Program helps do. It helps people get online stores. It helps people with their websites and their marketing and helps people get selling quickly. The exciting thing that we're doing now is we're adding a pop-up component to this. And so we've had our first pop-up at our location at the Lacey South Puget Sound Community College. And so we had about 35 vendors there that were selling their wares. And so not only can they sell online, but they also have these pop-ups that we'll be doing quarterly. Next slide, please. So this is our, this is our number so far for you this year. So, so far we've had 23 Tom Water entrepreneurs go through the training and coaching. And we had two new businesses started, two new businesses started. Next slide. And so this is, it's a little small, but you'll be able to see the slide tick later. But that's some of the, some of the, you know, industries and thing, and, and some of the businesses that are starting in Tom Water. You won't see that whole list of 25 on there because a lot of those folks went to intro to business. And that's how they interacted with us. And so they didn't have a business yet. Okay, next slide. Okay. And so this is one of our latest success stories coming out of Tom Water. And this is Juniper, who owns Forest Floor Artistry. I really like her art. It's really cool. Especially the, if you see the snail on the bottom, it's like a British snail. It's got like a teacup as the shell. So she came to the Women's Business Center and the program manager helped her finish her business plan, get a business license, finished her logo, helped her with her website. And so she just, she just participated in her first art walk. She's got her e-commerce platform up and running and we're excited to see where she goes because her art's really cool and I, and I really like it. Okay, next slide, please. So this is our air traffic control center. And so you saw the, what Michael refers to as the logo soup. And so this is really our website where folks come to figure out what resource is going to be best for them. We do have a training and program coordinator, Yessenya, who actually will work with people either over the phone or through email, if that's their preferred mode of communication. So you just come to this website. If you're a new business, you click on there and all of the resources that are for new businesses will pop up and you can sort of help to start to see where you want to, where you think you need help and where you want to enter into the ecosystem. Okay, next slide. And we do have a calendar of events on our business resource website. And so this is a great place to look for upcoming things. And it's not just our events. We go out and find events by all the, our, all the other partners we have. And that really helps people to understand what's available. And there's all kinds of, you know, stuff going on that can be, you know, good for some people, not so good for other people. So it helps people figure out what's going to be the best event to attend and spend their time. Okay, next slide. So we're going to shift to talking about the Lacey Makerspace here for a bit. Absolutely.
Hold on a moment. Go ahead.
So what are the costs involved with some of the programs that I'm looking at? And how do you work and partner with the VA?
That's a good question. And it's, it's a little serendipitous that we have a new Women's Business Center program manager who actually, her husband works up at JBLM, he's in the army, I believe. So she has a lot of ties to JBLM in that sense. In terms of veterans programs, we don't necessarily, we, we target everyone. Right? And so anybody that walks in the door, we're going to, you know, find the right space for them. And so essentially all the programs are scholarshiped. And so there's not any cost to any of the participants. Yeah. And so money from the City of Tom Water, money from the other cities, money that we get from the Department of Commerce and other state agencies and federal agencies pays for all of this stuff. And so nobody has to pay for anything.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so unfortunately the, Michelle, the Makerspace Director could not be here this evening. She's currently in New Jersey, visiting her grandma who just turned 100. So we just wanted to talk a little bit about what's happening at the Makerspace. And so we had a few of you come and tour the Makerspace. And so really what's happening now is construction is finally underway and we're moving from 3,300 square feet to almost 10,000 square feet. So we're almost tripling our footprint. This is the plan and you can see that the space is going to be divided into these zones for woodworking, for metalwork, welding. There's a digital lab where all the 3D printers and all the computers for the 3D printers will be. There's going to be a textile lab with classrooms. And so it's going to be a significant increase in space. Right now we're still spending down the large grant we got from the EDA. So we still about have about a half a million dollars worth of equipment to purchase. And we are consulting with local businesses to see what they have in terms of input in relation to what kind of equipment we should buy in terms of workforce training. We just talked to the small planet supply down there and then they, they had a few suggestions for, for things that they would like to see that they need for their upgrade in manufacturing. So this is the new footprint. It's exciting. We should be open. The construction should be done in January and we should be reopening in February. The space is still partially open, but the entire footprint will be open. So we hope to have everyone here for the open house to be able to check out the new space. Next slide, please. I keep looking at you like you're the person. So these are some just testimonials from folks that are using the space. And really the, the idea here is that this is something for the entire region. And so we have folks coming down from Tacoma, all the way up from King County, all the way from Aberdeen and Grace Harbor. People are making and prototyping products. I just worked with a woman the other day that has a prototype for a women's health product that could revolutionize the way a specific testing is done. She's in the third stage of her prototyping and it's going to be exciting to, to see that this is going to be something that's going to possibly be a, have a global impact on women's health. So that's the kind of stuff that's coming out of the Makerspace now. We have a few Tom Water residents here that are giving testimonials, talking about, you know, enjoying the space and learning new skills. It's not only a space for workforce training. It's a, it's a place to learn more skills. It's a place to come and have fun and do art. Next slide, please. These are some of the partners we're working, we're working with. And so one of the exciting things that we've just, we just partnered up with the Timberland Regional Library. And we're going to have four Makerspace memberships that you can check out at any of the libraries. And so you can go to And so you can go to a library, check out a membership, and then you can come into the Makerspace. And use that membership in lieu of paying the monthly membership. So that's, that's a new, a new development that's exciting for us. We also have been working with Windfall Lumber here and the architectural products to, to create their new line of, of design. And so that's exciting. That's also at Tumwater. But the idea here and what Michael always says is we don't do anything without partners. And we are really expanding our partners, you know, across the region. We just started working with Ajax for workforce training. And so it's something that I think is, is going to be exciting in the future. Next slide, please. So if you take anything away from today, one of, one of the things that I want you to know is that. These are three of the largest and most successful Makerspaces that are open to the public in the United States. One's in San Francisco, one's in Dallas, one's in Chicago. And I used to think that the Lacy Makerspace was going to be nice for Lacy. And then I thought, maybe it'll be nice for the region. And then I thought, maybe it's going to be nice for the Pacific Northwest. And I'm thinking this is going to be one of the premier Makerspaces in the entire nation. So it's going to be something that really brings innovation to the region. And something that's going to be exciting to see all the products that come out of it. And we're starting to see those happen already. So it's, it's, you know, it's an exciting time to be part of this. Next slide, please. So here's a little breakdown of the memberships and you'll see that we have 10% of our memberships coming from Tumwater. We do have a large percentage of memberships coming outside of Thurston County as well. And so there are, we do have a lot of Tumwater members that are coming through. And we expect with the space tripling in size, we're probably, we've already, since Michelle started, we already quadrupled in memberships. We're expecting that to keep pace and we'll be on pace to, you know, quadruple this active membership number, which is at 185 right now, probably next year. So it's going to be a, a lot of things happening at the Makerspace. And we really appreciate Tumwater's support in this endeavor. And we want to always make sure that we, you know, do say that this is a regional resource. And so it's for everybody in this region. Next slide. All right. And these are some of the faces and products of the Makerspace. Although we have had a lot of success, this has been a very major project to lift and we're not quite over the hump yet. We have a new strategic plan in place that helps, that shows us getting, you know what I mean, into the black in 2025. We still have funding needs to cover this space. The construction was delayed for probably almost a year. And so the things have been, you know, moving a lot more slowly than we anticipated. So we're looking for some bridge money to go along. One of the things that I will mention is that through the community foundation, there's a Give Local campaign that's happening right now. And the Makerspace does have a, a, a page on that Give Local campaign. So if you know anybody that's interested in donating to the Makerspace, we definitely could use some more funding just to get us through. This, this startup phase and into the next phase where we will, we, we will grow and, and, and blossom into the, the, the Makerspace we can be. All right. Any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Swarthow?
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Can you remind me, where is the Lacy Makerspace?
It is on the St. Martin's campus in Xavier Hall. So it's almost directly across from like the Timberland Lacy Library. Yeah. And please come and visit when you have a chance. We'll invite everyone to the open house when it does reopen.
Councilmember Agabi?
Thank you, Mayor. Michael. Last two Fridays, you and I met and during our discussion, you showed me a data. That has 12 data points for Tumwater. And then you also had data points for Lacy and Olympia. And you had told me that the reason why Tumwater database has 12 data points is because. Actually, I would want for you to clarify why that was the case. That's question number one. And then question number two, that membership starts for the Makerspace that has told us 10%. Does that, is that derived from that data point that you and I were discussing two Fridays ago?
I'll just answer the second question. So it's 10% out of 185 current members. It's 10% of that that are from Tumwater.
So in that case, this is not related to the, to the data point that Michael and I talked about two, two, two Saturdays, two Fridays ago.
I think the issue about the data point has to do with our reporting mechanisms, Councilmember Agabi. The data I was sharing with you had to do with our associate development organizations required by the Department of Commerce. It's a little bit of different timeline that we provided that data to you. But it, again, it's very consistent with how we report, not only to that data, but how we report it into the Washington State Department of Commerce website. And I've shared that with you as a, the way to say, hey, you know, we're, we're, we're moving things forward. I think one of the questions I had for you was of a concern on ours, that some of the data was a little bit lagging. And behind what the other cities were performing at. That has to do with the size of the, as we talked about, had to do with the size of the total economy and the size of the entrepreneurs within each community. Hope I answered your question, but again, there was.
So what is the relationship of that data point with this 23? Data points that Sean just discussed from some few slides back, because I'm, I'm a little confused. What is the relationship between those two data points?
Uh, again, I think it has to do with the way that we report that to Department of Commerce. I'd have to go back and I think I'm understanding you correctly. I provided Councilmember Agabi with the report that we provide Washington State Department of Commerce through our Associate Development Organization. Some of that data is a little bit different than what Sean showed here because it doesn't, that report doesn't report all of the data that we provide to Commerce. So there is a little bit of disconnection and we can, we can connect those if you'd like that another report.
I would very much like for those two data points to, to be connected and clarification made and submitted to Council, please.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dahlaf?
Thank you. Uh, Juan, I love that presentation. I digged it because it helps me be able to answer to the community when they're asking what's happening. That's super helpful. The one thing you talked about pop ups at your location, what would that look like to do pop ups in Tumwater?
And that's something we definitely are excited to explore and we would like to have. We just finished our first one. We, we had a holiday one at the Makerspace last year, but.
That's awesome though. I love that. It's a great idea.
So we definitely want to expand it out through Thurston County. We just have to find locations and you know, that's, you know, one of the challenges, so.
I think that could be a cool partnership with certain, you know, other entities that are in our city, maybe the largest landowner. That might have space to bring, I mean, I think that could be a really great collaboration and a success story of partnering. So I love that.
And we'll be doing them quarterly. So we'll definitely, I'll, I'll, I'll have the Women's Business Center Program Manager reach out and, and, and start, you know, starting that conversation.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes, um, Michael, I like this. The humanizing, these success stories, let us know. Keep up the great work and thank you for your hard work. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Your earlier question about how we work with veterans? We're right next to the pub. Our, our building is literally 40 feet away. And so there is a cross pollination of individuals that walk in there. They know if they're looking for entrepreneurial development, they can walk right next door. And Sean's right, we'll serve everybody. Absolutely. Our, our budget that our board adopts allows us to serve everyone. And we've never turned anybody away as long as I've been there. I've been there 20 years now, so.
And I see that you're doing a lot with the, with the young restaurateurs and the iconic wings. And I believe that there's a jerk restaurant, a Jamaican restaurant. So good work in that area.
You could bring a Brazilian restaurant to Tumwater. That would be appreciated.
We'll, we'll start giving you all kinds of ideas here in a minute. Uh, Councilmember Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Michael. I was thinking back to when I was first with you, when you started with this organization. And I don't recognize it now. All I, all I see is success. And it's great. Some of the things that were dreams and hopes are now reality and getting more real, just like this Makerspace. So I want to congratulate you and all the people who've marched along this way over these years. I also want to ask, is there a, a theme of these makers? Are there more things being made by the makers than other things? Is there a trend or anything, or is it just many different things?
So let me re, respond to your first comments and then I'm going to turn to Sean for the typology of makers. First of all, thank you for your comments. And I'm going to throw that bouquet right over to the team that we have. We have a phenomenal economic development team, the professionals that work in our office with us. Start with Sean on down to Yessenya and how we outreach to individuals and bring them into the system. As you know, you're, when you're on the board and Councilmember Agabi is well known. Is that we don't do anything without partners and make sure that that partner, partnership extends to the individuals that we serve. There's no reason to create a partner if you're not going to serve people, right? It's kind of silly. So we want to make sure that we do that. But I thank you for your, your, your platitude, but we have a long ways to go. I recognize that. We've done some really good, good things. I'm very proud of what we do. But our, at our border retreat two weeks ago, we recognized that we got some better days ahead of us. And I'm very excited.
Great.
In response to the second question, I think that you, you, we find that the two primary types of makers are. Individuals that are actually prototyping or creating things. Also for small business support, a lot of the equipment there can actually be used to make branded materials. Such as, you know, shirts, sweatshirts, laser engraved hydro flasks. You know, stuff that you can actually put your brand on and sell. So that's quite popular. And then there's a lot of art that's done there as well. And so there's art classes. The stained glass class is very, very popular stained glass ornaments during Christmas. And so that's the other big thing. And I think the workforce development piece where once the space is completely open. Then you'll start to see the workforce development piece with the welding and, you know, training. Construction workers and all that kind of stuff really starts to blossom after that's done.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Awesome. Very good. I liked all the color.
Great. Thank you. I don't believe we have any more questions. So I really appreciate you coming this evening and, and giving an update. It's always very helpful. And I think this is just a resource that in our community that I, I'm not always sure people are aware of. And it's always hard to continue to get the word out. It is just sometimes difficult. So hopefully this will, this will put it out there in the public a little bit more. So really appreciate you coming this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and your attention. Thank you.
You bet.
All right. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting as well.
All right. Next item is public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening? Do we have anyone online signed up?
No one online.
I believe getting the roster. All right. I have one person signed up, Pamela Hanson, if you can come to the podium and provide your name and address. And public comments, three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Pamela Hanson and my address is Post Office Box 14521, Tumwater, Washington. First of all, I'd like to say a happy Monday night football night and congratulations to all of us and the viewers that are watching this government programming tonight. My second comment is regarding the National Veterans and Military Families Month. I personally would like to congratulate and recognize the military media, including DVIDS. At least some military leadership wrongs would not be brought to the surface without both DVIDS. And the Military Times and their associated media and fans. Three. I listened but did not participate in Tumwater's public hearing regarding Proposition 1 that is being voted on and the voting ends tomorrow. At that hearing, I noticed that there was no information provided as to how the Proposition 1 tax monies would be used if approved. And distributed to the city of Tumwater. Meaning. 75% is going to county law enforcement for the, at the county level. My view, I think everyone can kind of predict is 75% of that money that Tumwater receives needs to go to the Tumwater Police Department. And I think that's what the assumption would be if people just very quickly read through the proposition information. They may. Get to the wrong conclusion that that is the way it would be in every city. So that's my opinion on that. I did sit back and listen and watch. And I really did appreciate the county, county sheriff showing up and county commissioner Mahia. That was very nice of them. But again, I think that gave the, an incomplete. Distribution of money intent or lack of constraints for Tumwater. So I hope that money will be tracked if it passes tomorrow. The fourth item is congratulations to the person who is applying to the Planning Commission. Excellent accomplishments with Disney, with brewing, with Boeing. But what, what struck me as, and I have 16 seconds left, so I'm just going to go straight to it. And Sheriff Grady Judd in Florida. He has a very big personality. He has had a lot of dealings with Disney. And so in that perspective, percentage of crime. Needs to be factored into anything that is brought into Tumwater. So I hope that person that I obviously is probably going to be on the Planning Commission and congratulations. Takes that into consideration and planning for Tumwater. Thank you. Great. Thank you.
All right. I don't believe anyone else in the audience is going, I'll just call as anyone else wanted to do public comment. And the reason I'm saying that is almost all staff, so. All right. With that, we will go to the consent calendar. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Hold on while I turn on microphones.
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second to approve the consent calendar. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay. All right. The consent calendar is approved. We do have a public hearing this evening and it's on ordinance number 2023-013. Adverrum of the regular property tax for the fiscal year 2024. And Shelley Carter will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm a little shorter than everyone else. Tonight I am presenting the 2024 Property Tax Levy Ordinance for the City of Tumwater. And we are required to respond to the Thurston County Assessor's Office with an approved ordinance by November 30th. Every year, the Thurston County Assessor's Office provides us with reassessed values of properties. That's existing, including new construction and any annexations that may have taken place. And that's used to estimate the values for the districts, I'm sorry, not the districts, for the city's annual property tax levy. As you know, the city's property tax levy is a very important revenue source for the city's general government programs and public services. And we are allowed by law to increase the levy each year, either by 1% or by the implicit price deflator or the IPD, whichever is lower. Typically, that's the 1%. This year is no different. The IPD is at 3.67. So the ordinance before you establishes the City of Tumwater's property tax levy for fiscal year 2024. With an increase of 1% over the 23 levy. If you could share my slide. So this is just a visual comparing 23 to 24. These are estimated values. But the most recent estimated values that I've gotten from Thurston County show a 2% increase in the values. The regular tax levy at a 1% increase over 23 would bring us to 11.18 million. And that gives us an increase in revenue over the regular levy of 110,698. In addition to that, we have assessed values. In addition to that, we have assessed values for new construction. And that assessed value came in at two twenty-seven point eight two million, which gives us an additional four hundred and four thousand ninety-eight dollars for tax levy. There was no annexation to give us additional levy for twenty twenty-four. And with all of that information, that calculates the city's levy rate at one point eight six. That's per thousand. Let's see, I jumped ahead in my notes here. The ordinance is necessary to establish and certify the city of Tom Waters' request for the twenty twenty-four property tax levy and indirect property tax rate is outlined. These numbers may change slightly depending on the assessor's values adjusting before we do our certification. And tonight I'm presenting the twenty twenty-four property tax levy request as a public hearing and requesting to move the ordinance forward as a consent item for adoption at the November twenty-first council.
Great. Any questions before I open the public hearing? Hold on one moment. Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, the one percent versus the latter three point six seven percent. Is that the inflation rate, the three point six seven percent?
Basically.
Okay.
It's it's not technically inflation, but it is sort of the inflation rate for property values.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will go ahead and open up for the public hearing. Do we have any questions? Do we have anyone signed up online?
No.
Just one person in the audience. Okay. Pamela Hanson, if you want to come to the podium.
Pamela Hanson, post office box one, four, five, two, one, Tom Water, Washington. And yes, I do like football, but I'm here instead. So regarding this ordinance. Let me give you a little background. I know most of you are familiar with that. I used to work at the Department of Revenue and was the administrative assistant to the comptroller before I was a supervisor in the Department of Revenue Property Tax Division. So aside from the Department of Revenue portion of this that I read that seems to be a little bit new to me. I do not agree with this tax increase that this ordinance approves. And this is going to sound repetitive to the people that have heard me testify before on different issues like the golf course and the golf balls, over thirty-three thousand dollars spent on golf balls in a consent calendar approval and the multiple tax exemptions for Glen Wells. So if there is enough money to throw at golf balls instead of crying at Glen Wells instead of keeping within a budget, then this is wrong. This is just totally wrong. I am totally against it. Tom Water needs to live within its budget and prioritize things and let other people buy their own golf balls and let Glen Wells pay his taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? All right, with that, I'm closing the public comment portion. So this will now go to the consent calendar. Do I have to have action to do that?
Yes.
Hold on while I turn on microphones. All right, any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
You want to read it?
Yes. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I move ordinance number oh, two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, one, three, an ordinance relating to tax revenue of the general fund fixing the ad valorem for the regular property tax levy essential to pay expenditures of the city of Tom Water, Washington for the fiscal year ended December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three to the November twenty-one, twenty twenty-three consent agenda for adoption.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Dahlhoff, seconded by Councilmember Althouser. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we are to committee reports. First committee report is Public Health and Safety Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Health and Safety Committee will be meeting November fourteen, eight AM. All are welcome. As usual, it's virtual. On the agenda for next week is the agreement with the Confederated Tribes of the Chehalis Reservation for Fire Protection and Emergency Services. In addition, we will be talking about the Intergovernmental EMS Contract Advanced Life Support Funding Amendment One.
Great, thank you. Next would be General Government Committee, Councilmember Althouser.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a packed agenda for this coming Wednesday for the General Government Committee. We're going to be discussing an ordinance about extending some of our public parks' safety measures to other city-owned lands. As we heard earlier, we'll be talking again about the Thurston County EDC and renewal of some of our support for that organization. We'll also be covering an ILA, an interlocal agreement between the city and the port about the Bush Prairie Habitat Conservation Plan Amendment Number Three. And we'll also be covering three chapters of our updated comp plan, the Growth Management Act, Housing Needs Allocation Process, Climate and Conservation. Should only take four hours.
Thank you. Councilmembers, fourth out, the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. So I was just counting five of the ten items on the consent calendar were approved by the Public Works at their last meeting. So thank you to our team. And then we do have a meeting coming up this Thursday at eight o'clock. And we'll be discussing Resolution R twenty twenty-three dash zero one one that has to do with the twenty twenty-four fee resolution. We have a service provider agreement with RH Engineering Incorporated for the brewery wellfield development project amendment two. And we have a service provider agreement with Skilling's Incorporated for the golf course parking lot stormwater retrofit design and permitting project amendment number one. Join us at eight.
Great, thank you. And then Budget and Finance Committee, we met late earlier and the item on our consent calendar was the twenty twenty-four Community Human Services Program Funding that the Budget and Finance Committee reviewed, and we were also discussing budget amendments, which we will continue that discussion tomorrow at four o'clock. So this will be for the budget adjustments for our biennium budget. So with that, we will go to Mayor and City Administrator Report, and I'm sorry, I did not clue the city administrator in that I was going to start with her.
Thank you, Mayor. As usual, I like to give kudos where kudos are well deserved by our hardworking city of Tom Water crews. I would like to share with you that the TYP school night, the Friday Night Out events have started on October twentieth. There were four hundred and fifteen kids that participated in that Greed School event. And there was another one, I think, this past weekend, and I have not yet heard how the attendance was there. Parks Crew, I attended their quarterly staff meeting and they were debating whether or not they should announce that those programs any longer because they were getting so big. And great attendance, and we're really grateful for the hard work that they do. I think we also have city staff members that participate as parents sometimes in those events, so that's great also. I wanted to make the council aware that the Thurston County, Thurston Regional Planning Council, their hazards mitigation plan for Thurston Region is currently in the public comment stage. So there is a online viewing that you can download from trpc.org/hazards. The deadline for comments is Friday, November seventeenth at five PM. So if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to send you more information so you can take a look. And then lastly, but most importantly, I wanted to share with you, I was able to attend the Tom Water Police Department's training event that they had on Friday morning at seven fifteen, and I made it on time. The very first thing that they did was they offered Seth Stauffer is one of our officers, a young man who has worked for the city of Tom Water Police Department for, I believe, about three or four years. Tom Water High School graduate. He was awarded the life-saving award for his actions that were taken on a day in September. He was doing a voluntary outreach to the Dollar Tree business in our community. And so he was not responding to any type of a call. He was doing some proactive outreach to them. The store manager approached him. There was a gentleman outside who was in distress and passed out and not responding. And Officer Stauffer performed CPR until the fire department was able to respond and the person lived. So we were, I was happy to observe that award being given to Officer Stauffer and just it reiterates for me how great the city of Tom Water staff really are and how much they really care about the people in our community. So thank you to Seth. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Great, thank you. So on November first, I attended the Intercity Transit Authority Board Meeting. And one of the items that we did was we adopted the budget, a draft budget for the public hearing that'll happen. And then we also was introduced to our, the fifth operator class of the year. It used to be that you'd had one, maybe two bus operator classes. We are at number five. So hopefully, we they're working very hard on getting enough bus drivers to get it to pre-pandemic. And I believe it's like at eighty-five percent or eighty-four percent of pre-pandemic, so they're almost there. One of the major items that we did during that meeting was to announce the selection of the general manager. So that was, the general manager was selected. We did a nationwide search. It was very, 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 very intensive. They, we had made it down to three candidates within Western Washington. And so we had they had spent two days in panel interviews, so it was a very intensive. And we decided to select the actual interim general manager to brings in an enormous wealth of experience. And so Emily Burkamp was selected to be the the general manager of Intercity Transit. She has twenty years with Intercity Transit and so staff and the Authority Board were very happy to make that announcement. So as many things, it's very hard to do with interim leadership, and so this will be great to have that completed. And that was all the meetings that I had since our last meeting. So with that, I will go to Councilmember Reports, and I think I will start in Zoom. So Councilmember Agabi, would you mind starting?
Thank you, Mayor. So I attended a JASCOM meeting on the twenty-fifth of October. And we started off with, of course, adopting the previous meeting that was that we have for meetings way back, I believe in July. So during our meeting, we discussed the budget, key budget accomplishment for twenty twenty-three. And we did those by goal. So goal number one. There was a completed capital feasibility plan and goal number two, twenty percent of all square new to performing, we're performing in-house of all, we're performing in-house. There are forty percent medical treatment were done in-house. There there was a, for for the treatment, there were reduced anesthesia using surgery. Then goal number three. JASCOM participated in twenty community outreach events. And they also hosted the UMass Society event in-house and more planning to be done for twenty twenty-four. So in comparison for animals in shelter compared to twenty twenty-two, that number increased by eleven percent in twenty twenty-three. Then overall, field costs decreased by six point nine percent. Why field costs for Thurston County as a whole increased by eleven percent? For license sales, there was an increase of two percent in twenty twenty-three. And this is due to online transaction when compared to in-person transaction. And then at the twenty twenty-four budget, there is going to be an increase of three percent over the twenty twenty-three budget. So the proposed budget for twenty twenty-four is three point nine million. And we are going to adopt and talk about the budget, I believe, on the thirteenth of this month, November. So JASCOM has been tentative veterinary position of to veterinary. And this person currently, I believe, is in-house and is highly, highly recommended. And for them to do this, they are within some requirements that 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 one we currently need to be employed. So you're coming that they are waving this commission officer requirement that are no longer applicable under state law, I believe. So and that is with JASCOM. So for EDC, I attended a summit on the twenty-fifth. And that summit was from one o'clock, no, from eleven o'clock in the morning to four o'clock in the afternoon ordinarily. Because I have a, for that day job, I was only able to attend for about three hours. So one of the things that EDC is currently working on is from what we have, from what I understand, currently in Thurston County, since, since currently Thurston County, there is no economic development commission or administration for Thurston County. So to verify that Thurston County has completed the civic work in the formation of an economic district consisting of four counties, Thurston, Gray South, Pacific and Mason. The four-county community development strategy, CDS, was completed and submitted to the Federal Economic Development Administration. An approval has been given for the formation of the economic district. Although there are more work to be done, but significantly, they are getting approval to proceed with the formation of the economic district. And within the next few months, Thurston, EDC, we began the establishment of an actual management structure of the, of the the organization that is going to be known as Sali's Pacific Economic Development District. And they are going to be working on the adequacy of our incorporation, the buylaws and the establishment of and the establishment of a governing body. This governing body and the buylaws will need to be required, we need to be reviewed by the governor's office and recommendation approval given for the Economic Development Administration. The economic district will have a governing body that is inclusive of at least three members from each of the four counties that will form the economic development district. Each county has already provided approval statement. And each of the four counties are represented currently by an economic development organization from each of the county. So that is my report.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Agabi. Councilmember Snyder?
Mayor, I have no report at this time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Kathy?
Yeah, I wanted to say that the General Government Committee's meeting for our meeting that Councilmember Dahlhoff will do the first two hours and I will do the second two hours. I just wanted our chairperson to know that. Are you okay with that, Councilmember Althouser?
As long as we have a quorum, we're good.
Okay, good. All right. Scared me to death. So I, I wanted to say that I attended, along with Councilmember Althouser, the Regional Housing Council, whenever that was, about the twenty-fifth of October. And it was one of our more significant ones. It was long. It was very interactive and I feel like a number of things really got said and decided and on a good or on, at least on the track. And I'm sure he'll tell you more about it. But just to let you know, housing is not only a huge topic, it is a tremendous complicated need. And for all the different types of housing that we need. And also I attended the Solid Ways Advisory Council on this past Wednesday. And we'll be at the general government meeting when I get there. And we'll also be attending again the Regional Housing Council. So that's my past, present and future schedule.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor. My only update is last week, Wednesday, I was involved with the selection for our next Term Water Hopes Coordinator. We had one excellent candidate and three more to interview this week. And I have, I just wanted to, to let Councilmember Schneider know that I missed that chili competition. And I understand that it was a great turnout, but I was sick with COVID and I was under quarantine. So I'm telling you, I really, really wanted that, that apron. So I missed it again. I missed it again. But good work with that, with that. I saw photos and it was just, I missed it. I missed it. It's not because I didn't want to attend. I couldn't attend at that time. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dahlhoff?
Well, besides we're running chili right now, Councilmember Jefferson, I had, since our last meeting, five meetings, I have five upcoming meetings. The one I wanted to highlight was the Project for Civic Health Summit. So the Project for Civic Health was created by Lieutenant Governor Denny Heck and Henry M. Jackson Foundation in the University of Washington and Washington State University. So the summit brought together over two hundred community and political leaders from across Washington to gather and think about how to find common ground and build more robust ways to strengthen our abilities to debate, discuss and develop better solutions to what confronts us. And it was, it was eye opener and it was most of the day. And they brought people together who are concerned about civic health to create action oriented and tangible recommendations to improve the governance demonstrated by elected officials in Washington, develop practical and transformative ideas and create public accountability. And all that is distilled in the report called Common Ground for the Common Good. And if anyone is interested in that, I highly recommend reading that. It is an eye opener and it gives me hope for our future. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Althouser.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. As Councilmember Kathy noted, we attended the Regional Housing Council on October twenty-fifth and took a variety of actions. I think what the most significant action we took was approval of recommendations from the Affordable Housing Advisory Board regarding how to influence, how to spend a pot of inflationary spending. That was funds that were appropriated by the legislature for locals to provide additional funding to contractors in recognition of increased inflationary prices. Most of those things went, were designated by the state to go towards staff, things like wages and things like that to account for inflation. So we accepted the recommendations, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, from that perspective. And I believe that was about one point four million dollars that now goes to the county for approval. We also got a presentation that was taking a deep dive and a look into how our ERAP and TRAP programs fared through the Great Recession. That's the Emergency Rental Assistance Program and the Temporary Rental Assistance Program. Those were our primary programs through COVID to help families in Thurston County weather the storm. Whether it was job loss, decreased revenue, dealing with inflation, you know, what have you. That was the safety net and the lifeline. And we got a really informative, great presentation about where those funds went in the county, for what demographics they served, how people utilize that money. In total, fifty-three point five million dollars was coming to this community to support families who have housing needs. And that's largely a lot of funds that are now said and done. It was either federal money or state money or what have you. But a lot of that was funding to weather that emergency that is no longer here. So the second half of the presentation also contained a survey of like, well, what's happening now and what's happening next? Like if those families were in need then, has that need resolved? Surprise, surprise, it has not. There, there are some families that COVID was sort of a temporary thing, but really what the survey found is that there is still excessive need throughout the entire system across all income bands, whether that's, you know, a hundred percent area median income or twenty percent area median income. There isn't enough housing for folks out there. It was a really great presentation. I'm gonna forward it along to the rest of council so you all can see the slides from that presentation. And then Regional Housing Council also meets this coming Wednesday. So I'll have another report at our next council meeting.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Swarthup.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. On November third, I attended the Thurston Regional Planning Council meeting. And we had a number of presentations. My one takeaway was that we had a presentation on the, the high capacity transportation. And there was two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant to study examining options for multimodal high capacity transportation to serve travelers on the I-five corridor between central Thurston County and Pierce County. And so we had an update on that information. And then also some discussion, people that still want to see sound transit come to Olympia. But because of the, the size of the area, it doesn't warrant it at this point. So as far as the population, which is so kind of disappointing to hear, but. And they also had worked on some alternative routes for, as far as have those on record. So when, if, if we ever have to shut down the freeway again, then as far as addressing those alternative routes. And Mayor Sullivan's on there as well. And we talked about the rapid bus that used to go back and forth to Tacoma. So there's opportunities there to help with transportation and getting people off the freeway. And so the other thing too is that when they were talking about the GIS information, so TRPC does a thing called the Profile. And it was just updated for November twenty twenty-three. And it has all the updated statistics for the city of Tumwater, as far as their demographics, households and housing. So there's lots of information on there that's really good. If you like numbers, and I like numbers. So it's, it's good information. Encourage people to look at that. So that's my report.
Great, thank you. So our next item is we're going to be going into executive session. And I want to verify, is it going to be, do we expect fifteen minutes, twenty minutes? What is the expectation? Twenty minutes, okay. So we will go, so the council will meet in executive session to discuss real estate acquisition pursuant to RCW forty-two dash thirty dash one one zero sub one sub B. And the council will be in recess for twenty minutes until eight forty. And the council is not expected to take further action following the executive session. So with that, the council members in Zoom, you were provided an extra, an additional link. And then we will come back at eight twenty. So we are in recess. Eight forty, I'm sorry. 8:40, I'm sorry.